Nicole here yet?
Oh.
There she is.
I couldn't tell you had a mask on.
Her name is Armia. Nikki Melsetters. There you go. Uh, Mike, are you gonna talk about this being the last?
What?
Are you gonna talk about this being the last canceled cycle of the year?
Am I telling them that?
Yeah.
Yes, and I'm also gonna. I'm gonna ask everybody's indulgency, bunch of notes on. Thanking people.
Okay.
Well, I say like I, I, here. Well, that's, that's a great deal. When I reach sixty-five, I'll never.
What's that gonna be?
No, I'm already, I'm past sixty-five. Yeah. Well, I was on disability, it's not disability now, and I'm regular.
One minute. One minute. And that was a quick one minute, so we're gonna go ahead and start. All right, just catching my digital clock on this system I have up here, so I thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Calling the city council meeting for Wednesday, December ninth, two thousand and twenty to order. At this time, if we could have a moment of silence, especially think about our healthcare workers and making sure and praying their sake. Thank you, everyone. If Alderwoman McGinnis would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Brian, if you please call the roll tonight. Dunn.
Here.
Dorman.
Yeah.
McGinnis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Gripp.
Here.
Condon.
Here.
Peacock.
Here.
Dickman.
Here.
Jokten.
Here.
And Ambrose.
Here.
Ten, I think, Your Honor. Thank you, Brian. So, good evening, everyone. We'll begin the meeting of the city council. Welcome everybody's in attendance and everybody that's viewing on your computers or mobile devices. Respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. As you always do, please keep in mind you're, you're sharing your comments with all of us in Davenport and people throughout the region. If you have a cellphone, please put it on silent or turn it off so it doesn't interfere with anybody talking tonight. If you wish to address the council or any, on any item that will be on the discussion agenda, please come to the podium. State your name, order, address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please remember that you have five minutes. Be respectful of us, we'll be respectful of you, and thank you for your participation. Will an alderman please move the approval of the city council meeting minutes for November twenty-fourth?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good, any opposed? Thank you. Ms. Merritt, filling in for our good city administrator, any update this evening?
Yes, Your Honor, we have two staff updates tonight. The first is a reminder to the public that tonight will be our last meeting for the month of December. We will be back in council chambers on January the sixth of two thousand and twenty-one. Our next update is from Public Works on Riverfront status update.
Ms. Gleason, thank you for giving us the quick update.
Hi, Nicole Gleason, Public Works. Alderman Ambrose requested, just as we were closing out the year, to give an update on the several projects we had going on the riverfront. So, the first one was the Canadian Pacific Crossing Restoration Project and Bike Path Reconstruction. That project is wrapping up right now. The bike path is complete and the painting is happening this week. Harrison will open this week and Gaines and Turgeon are set to open next week. And then there will still be a single lane closure around Rivers Edge, but we're expecting that to still be open by the end of the year. Many of you might have also noticed that the C D and Q parking lot, which is the parking lot directly across from Front Street Brewery, was under construction. There is still another layer of asphalt to be laid, but we will allow use over the winter and then finish that up first thing in the spring. So, that will be nice to have that one reopened. And then, as far as the flood study goes, we did just wrap up some public outreach and we had quite a bit of participation. We did have three in-person meetings, five virtual meetings, and we had three hundred and seventy-five people partake in our online survey. And of those three hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and fifty actually participated in the mapping exercise piece of that. So, are there any other things I missed that you're curious about?
I, I have a question.
Okay.
This, this is Alderwoman Lee.
Okay.
I noticed that there's some work being done down in the causeway of Credit Island. Are you cleaning up the, uh, the gravel down there?
Yeah, we're, we're just straightening it up and filling some patches. I believe our internal crews are working on that right now, and then we'll be doing some more comprehensive repairs in the spring.
Well, thank you for that.
Yep.
And I also want to say, excuse me, I took a walk down along the riverfront. It's looking really nice and the lights are up. The crossings are looking really good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gleason.
Thank you.
Up, please.
First off, I was, they did a pretty incredible job, Kyle, and thanks to your leadership along with J.J. and Marion. You know, I was surprised it turned out as nice as it has. And River Drive, just east of Marquette Street. What will that be wrapped up?
So, part of that is still our nineteen thirty sewer separation project, so, and part of it is actually also related to the craft demolition, which both of those should be wrapped up by spring, but I don't, I guess I'm not sure how much of them will be open yet this year. Yep.
Can we try to get one of the lanes opened up down there? And then, down the road, I'd like to get an update of where we're at with the craft plant because, you know, that's gonna be a significant impact to our west side of Davenport.
Sure.
But Nicole, it turned out great and I'm pleasantly surprised, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Gleason, Mr. Gripp, would I ask you something?
I just wanted to make a comment on the CP railroad upgrades and Alderman Ambrose, thank you for the kind words. I wasn't ready to speak on this, this matter, but I, I really do want to look at some way of formally recognizing the folks who are on that task force. They met weekly, if not twice a week, for a couple of months, got into railroad drawings very in-depth, worked with our staff and put in a lot of hours to get to the point we are. And agree with Alderman Ambrose, if you walk it, it has turned out really well, and I'm pleased with it. And I'd like to formally thank those, those folks who are a part of it, and I'll look into how we can do that more officially in the new year. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gleason.
Thank you.
And I'll remind our folks here to make sure we speak up so everyone, everywhere can hear, especially our colleagues, all right? Thank you, Ms. Gleason. Ms. Merritt, is there any other things from you? Very good, then moving on. Will an alderman please move approval to report to the committee of the whole?
Allode.
Second.
For December second. A motion and a second. All in favor, please?
Aye.
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 Hey, any opposed? Very good, okay? We have three appointments this evening, all to the Design Review Board, and they're all reappointments. Greg Lundgren, P.J. Slovgen, and Dana Wilkerson. Is there a motion to approve those?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Those are wonderful volunteer citizens that are helping us out, and thank you for serving. Next item is petitions and communications. I'll ask for an indulgence, I'll have, I have a couple of updates and thanks and some things tonight, so I appreciate your patience with me. First, I have to give you an update on the SRO workings in the last meeting or so, so just to keep everybody updated, the committee is still working. We're pretty much done with the, the draft of the MOU and the subcommittee for the addendum and the workings are going, and I'll applaud Ms. Spiegel, Mr. Klip from the school district, Lieutenant Smith and Chief Sikorsky from the police department, taking that on and, and really putting the meat into it. I want to also applaud the principals and the equity task force and many other folks that helped us, the NAACP, Mr. Roberson, and et cetera, that we've talked to, to provide good input. So, I would anticipate in the very next few months that there will be a presentation to the city council on what's, what's going on with that. But it, it's almost done and we're, we're getting ready to present, so thank you for that. And then I have a bunch of other stuff. I just want to take a moment, since Ms., as Ms. Merritt gracefully said, this is our last meeting for December slash two thousand and twenty. And we all know two thousand and twenty has been a wonderful, challenging, eventful year, to say the least, but I, I wouldn't do it justice if I didn't say some thanks and I didn't do a little review. Because of all the things that have went on with our city, state, nation, and world during a worldwide pandemic, your, your folks in the city, whether it's the city staff or citizens in general, have, have been doing their jobs, and, and I want to thank them. So, I know I'm gonna leave out people, I apologize in advance for that, wholeheartedly. But to Ms. Spiegel, our city administrator, and all our department heads, to my colleagues and council members sitting here or, or up above, and, and the, and our city staff in general, and, and the citizens of Davenport, thank you so much for your resilience and dedication to both this city and, and everything that's been going on. Your, your unwavering efforts to take on a challenge and problem solve and work through issues during the pandemic so that this government and this city can continue to work and, and provide services, I, I can't thank you enough. To our first responders, our police, fire, and medics, our healthcare workers, our teachers, parents who are now teachers, everyone that's, that's educating our children in, in so many different ways, I, I thank you so much. I thank everyone for your compassion and your understanding this year, both with us and, and everything that's been going on. One thing that's been so wonderful out of this terrible pandemic and things that have happened is, I believe we've, we've brought back empathy and compassion to folks, and it's just so appreciated. So, as this is the last meeting, I'd like to just, you know, review a little bit because I'm so proud of the council, our staff, our administration, and all our city folks. Our workers are at the front lines of, of what goes on, and it would, it would be not appropriate if I didn't talk a little bit, so I'll try and get through this quickly, but just thinking about all the things that went on this year, what you as the citizens and other folks have asked your council, your administration, your city to do. You, you asked us to fix streets, and if you haven't noticed, and, and I think a lot of people have, because I get a lot of calls, and they'll say, dang gum, Mayor, you've got this street blocked, you're doing this, I say, thanks for paying attention. The major infrastructure and investment that we've done in street repairs of millions of dollars, neighborhood streets of millions of dollars, and almost thirty million in other parts of street projects, sewer repairs, Ms. Merritt, I'm sorry, Ms. Gleason, I talked about those a little bit here. If you haven't noticed, down on the river with the nineteen thirties and the railroad and all the wonderful work the committee's talking about, and Alderman Gripp and his folks, that, that's going on to restore our riverfront. The dream project to improve homes, almost a million dollars put into that. The Parks Department and the awesome Gabe's Inclusive Play Village, the work that's been done by our staff and folks to get the CARES Act and the COVID funding to people that need it, all during, again, the pandemic. The Good Neighbor Project that's come along for, for neighborhoods and people to work together with our staff and our, our city to, to, you know, make their neighborhoods stronger. Managing a flood, people say to me, all the things you've done, we had, actually had a flood this year over River Drive. So, we ended veteran homelessness. We implemented a, a wonderful time capsule of hope between the school district and the, and the city. A million dollars, working with HUD and others to give, have a small business resiliency program so we can help in over forty applications just this year, and we look to have another second round of that to help small businesses just from the Davenport's perspective, much less others. Ms. Gleason talked about, you asked us to do, have a flood consultant and a study and get after and hire someone to help with our future mitigation. Work with the state and approved by the council for rental and mortgage assistance to people, and that's ongoing and that, that's, that's coming. Working with the Downtown Partnership and the, for a comprehensive together plan. Working with the police to fund some better tools for them to do their jobs more effectively. Collaborating with our partner organizations, committees, and commissions to listen to citizens and, and understand what's going on from the ground so we can do a better job. Working with our bond folks to get, during a pandemic, to ensure our bond rating and financial situation is, is outstanding and, and to have our conservative policies that we budgeted in the past come to fruition now, be during a pandemic, to make us a stable, financially secure city. Work contribute to, talking about the budget, we're gonna have budget work sessions coming on. Having a duratio in, in Public Works in two days, clearing almost a hundred miles of streets. Getting female here to assist people just in our location, the most in the state. Working with our civil rights and other folks to listen and discuss and, and understand their concerns so we can be a better city. Improving our communications network and citizens engagement. So, making the Davenport just what it is, and I, I thank the citizens, the staff, everyone so much during this trying year to do their job and problem solve, and our first responders who come to work every day and keep this city safe or get people to the hospital during a pandemic. So, we're working hard to, to try and keep Davenport and make Davenport a safe, stable, and welcome community. And I, I couldn't help but I have to thank everybody and thank the council and thank the staff and thank the citizens for doing this. And I appreciate you allowing me to say a few words. So, I'll move on. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you for those words, Mayor, and I, I wholeheartedly agree with all that we've been through in the last year. To consider our, our strong position that we have as a city is a testament to, to the people. And I had a, a similar speech prepared, and I, I'm still going to, to say it, even though it's very much what the mayor said, because I think that our city employees need to know that it has not gone unnoticed what, what they've done in the past year, and we really appreciate their, their efforts. So, I do want to issue a heartfelt thank you to all Davenport city employees. It's been an incredibly trying year. We had back-to-back flooding years, civil unrest, the duratio, and global pandemic. It's been stressful for over eighteen months in Davenport. City services are essential, and we've asked you to continue to show up and provide those essential services to the citizens through it all. And you've answered the call. At every obstacle, you've answered the call and you continue to answer, answer the call. So, I want to say thank you to every city employee for your commitment to serving the people of Davenport. We see you and we appreciate you very much. To our staff, my colleagues, and the people of Davenport, I want to wish you Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and Happy New Year. Here's hoping for a better two thousand and twenty-one, but even if it isn't, we'll get through it together. That's what we do at the city, and just appreciate everyone's efforts. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderwoman Lee.
Well, those are two hard acts to follow. But I also, I want to thank you, Mayor, for providing that update on the SROs. That's a very important issue, and I'm glad things are moving forward. I also want to thank all the city employees who have worked with me so closely to identify and solve my constituents' problems, which has been a little bit of everything this year, and I am very grateful for all the help and your positive and open response to all my questions, to my constituents' needs. I also want to identify, and the Community Impact Team, Officer Carver, in November found a homeless person who really needed to get home to Georgia, and he took the initiative to contact Scott County Community Services and get him a bus ticket home. May seem like a small thing, but that's a wonderful thing. Thank you, Officer Carver. And of course, I have to say something about COVID. In the United States, we now pass fifteen million cases reported, and that's an undercount. There's, there's more than that, that not been reported. And we're headed towards three hundred thousand dead in the United States. In Iowa, the deaths are rose fifty, risen fifty-six percent, and the positivity rate is still almost forty percent, according to Johns Hopkins. So, please, this is such an important time to take care of yourselves, to take care of others, your loved ones, people you don't know that you pass in the street, or when you go inside, please wear a mask, be respectful of everyone. We really want to slow this down and be compassionate and kind and try to keep everyone's health up. So, I also want to thank my colleagues. I've learned a lot this year, and we've had some really important discussions as councils, and we've addressed some kind of tricky issues, and we've done it as a council, and I am gra, very grateful to you all for that and, and for your ideas, and you're helping me learn. So, I think you're all making me a better Alderwoman, so thank you again. That's all.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Dorman.
Thank you, Mayor. I also do want to reflect back on the, the year that is, I can't believe it's already been one year down of being a, an alderman, no longer a, a new alderman. I guess you can say now I'm going into my second year. And the time really has flown by and I can't take, do it myself. There are so many people that helped me along the way within City Hall and the rest of the city staff, even on the, including on the other course group. Many times, people would come to me with a problem and I would give them an answer and a solution, and they'd be so grateful, and they would come to me with so much gratitude and be very happy that I got something done for them. So, many of those times, it was me getting in contact with the right person in City Hall, and they were able to take care of it right away. And so, the city staff and everyone, you guys all are very hard workers, and you really do so much for Davenport, and it's much appreciated. Reflecting back on the year, I've met so many great people within the community, and we've gotten a lot done, but I, I already can tell that we have some bigger issues on the horizon, that we're trying to brainstorm solutions that could strategically mitigate them for the long run. So, I'm very excited to continue the efforts with both the people of the fifth ward, as well as the state staff and other community members in order to tackle those, those problems. And then my, my last announcement is typically on the third Tuesday of every month, we have a fifth ward meeting. We won't be having that meeting here in December with the craziness that typically is the holiday season. I decided to cancel our December meeting. However, we will pick ward meetings back up in January, and we will continue with our regular occurrence of that on the third Tuesday of every month. So, with that, that's all I have to say, and I once again really appreciate everyone that I've met so far through the year, and I'm looking forward to next year for Brian.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman. Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted a couple of things. I wanted to also thank staff for everything they've done this year. Again, particularly the, for me, the folks who were either, they were maybe assigned, but then they jumped in, so we had a whole cadre of people working on census-related materials, and that really started last year, rolled into the early parts of two thousand and twenty, and then we had to all go virtual and flip everything we were planning to do, and people jumped in in this building and helped stuff envelopes and everything else that weren't assigned to do that, Brian, and others. Samantha, who is Summit Health, and Tiffany in the office, you know, spearheaded a lot of things, but many folks, and I, I want to thank you for that and, and all the people that worked on the census. That especially was important for, you know, an important job this year for us to get done for the city. And just to note, they're back. There are census workers, they're doing follow-up, and it, it's just their way of double-checking. They pick random people around the country and go and knock on their doors. Doesn't mean they've done something wrong with their census response, but it's, it's just a part of the cycle, and we found out last week that there were people here in the Quad City. So, if someone comes knocking, there are ways you can verify they will have identification, but that is actually happening. So, and then we will, we will see where that, where we go after that. You know, it will be months before we will really know, have any figures. But I wanted to say thank you for that. I am having a virtual ward meeting on Monday, the fourteenth, at six-thirty. If you go to the city's website and take, hit the drop-down menu at the top of the website, it says ward meetings. You go to that, you click on the date, and it will give you the information for how to get on. It is, it is a go-to, it'll be a go-to meeting, ward meeting, won't be in person at all, but it, it gives you the instructions for how to join, and anybody is welcome. So, that's all for me, and I just wish everybody happy holidays.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor. First off, I totally concur with you. We've been together for quite a while. You know, I'm so proud of being a small part of Team Davenport. They work twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, to make Davenport America's greatest city. And as we sit up here and review this last year, it's just, to me, I'm just so proud, and it's overwhelming how great the city of Davenport is and Team Davenport, so I hope everybody has a great holiday. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Anyone else? I'm pausing. Very good, and then I want to extra plug, and I, I knew I'd, I apologize, but I knew, and Ms., McGinnis, thank you. Tiffany Thorndike and Samantha Torres are like my saviors, so I have to thank them personally, and they know this, and I've said it to them, but I want to say it publicly too. They help everybody up here, but boy, do they help me and keep me straight. So, thank you, and, and I'll say Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Seasons Greetings, Happy Holiday to everyone, and I, I hope everyone's safe. So, if there's no one else that wants to speak? Very good, we'll move on to actual agenda items. So, the first, we have two on the discussion agenda tonight. The first item, the first item is a third consideration of an ordinance amending section ten point seven four point zero five zero entitled Mufflers: Prevention of Noise, and section nine point two zero point three zero entitled Trespass of the Municipal Code of the City of Davenport. Is there any public with comment? Please come to the podium, and I'll just say it for everybody, since you're first, sir. Name, order, address, and if you're not here, we'd love to know where you're from.
Jill Charlton, and I live in four-four. They should have passed this because everybody getting tired at about three o'clock in the morning, come down. If you have, if you're one officer, I don't got nothing against the police department or anything, but they pull you over, you tell you sip of the car, you know, they talk to you, first thing, oh, here comes one down the street. You can't hardly hear what the officer says. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public?
Motion to consideration.
Okay, no more public I'm seeing. There's a motion, and a second to move. Is there any discussion from alderwomen or aldermen? I see Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Let me get, there you go. It's gonna do it. In a minute. There we are. Okay. Yeah, one thing I wanted to just bring up, and I know there was some discussion last week about using some sort of a DB measurement, and that's not in the ordinance we're talking about right now. And I would hope we wouldn't do that. My understanding that, is that there is no, that measuring DB requires, and I've been through this and trying to deal with noise issues in Third Ward, it requires a specific measurement of a specific tool that is not in our, in our police cars now, and it's, people are all not trained to do it. So a patrol officer really can't, you know, can't, can't do this. And it requires, I'm afraid it would require work that, that will make this ordinance kind of null and void. And so I hope that, I know there was discussion of that, but I would hope that we would not introduce that tonight. I just, I think we need to get on this, and I know we'll never solve all the problems with noise in Davenport, but I would hate to see anything that would eliminate that in any way. So that's, just wanted to share that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, we heard last week from our council members of the problems with loud water cycles, loud mufflers, and I agree, I have the same thing in my ward, whether it's on Concord Street, Telegraph, Rockingham, except some of my colleagues talked about one ways, well, we get it coming from both directions. So I understand there needs to be, there needs to be enforcement, and I wholeheartedly agree. But my concern is, is the fifty-foot rule here, and, you know, I can hear a lot of things from fifty foot, and I'm not sure that that's the right answer. So I'm gonna, I am gonna ask, after my colleagues speak, to make an amendment to change that to a hundred foot. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Alderwoman Lee.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to reinforce what Alderwoman McGinnis said. I really think that decibels is very difficult to measure, particularly for a moving vehicle, and you have to have specific equipment, and you have to have an officer trained on that. I remember a while ago, I asked about decibels regarding outdoor events, and I was told that that had been discussed last year, and that it wasn't going to work. So I would suspect it probably wouldn't work on this one, too. I think the most important clarification that we're trying to make between the state law and here in Davenport is the state law says loud mufflers and the oily smoke. And what we're trying to make it is or the oily smoke. I was wondering if I could ask Chief Sikorski if he would come up and say what he thinks would be the most practical way for his officers to enforce this ordinance.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. This is Chief Sikorski, your police chief. You know, you had discussion about the decibel and having a decibel. That operationally, that would make it very difficult to use that as a tool to deal with the problem that you all are trying to seek a solution to, and that is the loud mufflers. Fifty foot, a hundred feet, I will tell you, just operationally from my perspective, the cars that you all have concern with, I can hear them from a hundred feet. That, that's what I would tell you from an operational perspective. Our officers can hear them as well. If you want us dealing with more vehicles that aren't as loud as those, then fifty foot may be a better one for you all. That is your decision to make, but I can tell you that we will deal with cars with extremely loud mufflers at a hundred feet. We can deal with that. That's my perspective.
Can I ask another question, Chief, while you're there?
Sure.
You also, you also have your, or how, I guess, would you provide evidence that something was inappropriately loud at either fifty feet or a hundred feet? If you were to go to court, what would you provide for evidence?
Yeah, and that, that would be mostly testimony by the officer, if that was necessary. But, but then we also have both squad car cameras and body cameras. But the reality of that is, when, when our officers turn their emergency lights on to stop a car, the, the squad car camera goes on automatically. It doesn't have audio prior to that. So, you know, it, it will be based on our testimony, and, and certainly it will capture the, the distance that we were from the, from the vehicle, but largely it will be that.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet.
You good, Alderwoman Lee?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Dorman.
Thank you, Mayor. Before council today, I went outside and sat on my front porch, as I said before, I live on Brady, which is one of the concerning areas. And with my Apple Watch, it now has this new cool feature where it has a decibel reader on it. It's an Apple Watch, so it's not nearly as precise as what our police department would use. However, I still was able to sit in there and read the traffic going by. When traffic, normal traffic was going by, it was roughly sixty decibels, fluctuating up and down, obviously. When the street light at Locust would release, and you'd have a big group of vehicles go together, it shot up to seventy, seventy-five. And even when big semis or cars that you could tell were older and had a bad muffler, when those would go by, it still didn't get above seventy, seventy-five. And I think what we've really kind of lost with this conversation we've had on this is that the ordinance is around to prevent excessive, unusual, or loud noise. And I think that is something we've really kind of lost the context of when we've had our discussions over the past couple of weeks. None of these vehicles that we're talking about are ones that have a bad muffler, or an old car, or even really kind of your, maybe fancier sports cars. There even was a motorcycle that went by, and the decibel reader didn't really get above that seventy, seventy-five decibel level. The cars that are in violation of this ordinance are the ones that you just spoke about, that you hear them from a hundred feet away, you hear them from two hundred feet away, you hear them from three hundred feet away. They're the ones that I can hear that are on Harrison Street on the other side of the park, and I can still hear them sitting on my front porch. That, I feel, is really the spirit of this muffler ordinance and what we are trying to get at. Just like what Marion said, I would not be unfavorable of the, Alderwoman McGinnis, sorry, of the decibel reading to also then kind of go back off of what Chief Sikorski said, too, that that makes this ordinance, once again, hard to enforce without special enforcement. And that was the whole reasoning why our legal department got together with our police department to find a way to get this ordinance to be enforceable, to prevent the obvious, excessive, unusual, and loud, ear-piercing noises that come through our streets. That also being said, I would support upping the fifty-foot threshold to be a hundred feet, like Alderman Dunn mentioned, because once again, this is the same type of vehicles that, you hear them coming from three hundred feet away, and not just your clunky old car that maybe has a rusty muffler. I really hope that we can take this to the next step, to get this ordinance in a enforceable manner. And like I said before, I would be open to having an amendment of the distance a little bit, but overall, I feel this ordinance really needs to be passed so it can be enforceable by our police department. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Dorman. Alderwoman Dickman.
Thank you, Your Honor, for a quick chance to speak here. Something that I've noticed in the discussion that's been had up to this point is that there's been a lot of focus on who could be unintentionally wrapped up in this ordinance and get penalized. And I just wanted to kind of also bring in the discussion of who is being harmed desperately by the status quo. You know, the, the people who live along these corridors who are losing sleep. You know, I know there are aldermen have spoken up for them some, but it's, it's not necessarily the people who are already powerful, who are, you know, able to say, oh, I'll just fix this thing, city. This has been kind of a hard and long fought, fought battle of, you know, these core neighborhoods along kind of our, our busy road. And so the reason that I will be supporting this ordinance is that I see that those neighborhoods being desperately harmed by not having these protections. And it's, it's worth that calculate, that risk. You know, I want our, our department to continue to make sure that we're not accidentally, implicitly marginalizing traditionally marginalized groups. But I think that we also need to look at the fact that it's maybe some people from these groups that are, are suffering most under the status quo, not being able to get sleep, or not feeling safe. You know, we've had a lot of people either hit or probably nearly hit by cars or speeding along, and it's not the exact same, but the people who don't care enough about their neighbors to have a car with a decent decibel rating when it's driving up the street are also the people who don't seem to mind if they're going above the speed limit. So that's all that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dickman. Before I go back to Alderman Dunn, who's gonna make a recommendation, anybody else? Very good. Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion to amend this ordinance to, say, one hundred feet instead of fifty feet.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. Brian, please call the roll on the amendment to go from voice, if you want. Okay, fifty to a hundred. We'll just do a voice. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
You're opposed. Okay, one opposed. Very good. So we have nine a's and one opposed. Thank you.
No, two a's.
Okay, we're gonna do a roll. Brian, please, please call the roll for the amendment to go from fifty to a hundred. Dorman?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jobden?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Peacock?
No.
Ambrose?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Condon?
No.
Anne Gripp?
Yes.
So eight yeses and two noes, Your Honor. Roger that. The amendment passes. Now we're back on the original ordinance. Brian, please call the roll on the original with the amendment to fifty to a hundred. Condon?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Ambrose?
Yes.
Peacock?
No.
Gripp?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Dorman?
Yeah.
Anne Jobden?
Yes.
Nine yeses and one no, Your Honor. Very good. That ordinance is adopted. The second item we have on discussion tonight is a motion approving a waiver, temporary deferral of sidewalk installation for the proposed Speedway store, number 101100, to be built at the intersection of Northwest Boulevard and Hillendale Road. Staff recommends denial, so a no vote denies their request for the referral. Is there any public with comment?
Move the motion.
Okay. Will Alderman move? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion from Alderman? Alderman Gripp.
Thank you, Your Honor. Last week, I asked that this item stay on discussion, so we would have the opportunity to go and look at the land out there, but also to engage the GDRC. So I'd like to start off by thanking Alderwoman Lee for going out and driving the entire industrial park, and then all of the adjacent land there as well, and then for Nicole and Brian from Public Works for meeting with us, with Alderwoman Lee and I today. I also had the opportunity to drive the area in question, and I'm sure many of my colleagues did as well. For the sake of everyone, what you'll find in the Eastern Iowa Industrial Center is there are no sidewalks in the complex. Outside of the, the park, there is only one sidewalk, which is the sidewalk at a hotel located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Northwest Boulevard and Hillendale. Speedway has two competitors there that sit on the intersection. Neither of those businesses currently have sidewalks. Today, Alderwoman and Lee and I engaged the GDRC, just to kind of ask them to weigh in on this. Although the Speedway is not located in the purview of the GDRC, it is adjacent to that property, and decisions that we make could affect the GDRC, so we thought it was appropriate to engage them. And it should also be noted that all of the properties that have been built out in the GDRC so far have been granted a sidewalk waiver by the city of Davenport. And also should be noted, the city reserves the right to order in those sidewalks at any time within that, that waiver that was granted. So the GDRC's basic position was that, you know, on its face, since none of the other properties in the adjacent area have sidewalks, seems like it, it may not be fair for Speedway to be required to put in those sidewalks. They did say that if the council sees it fit to order in the sidewalks along Hillendale, they would ask that the city engage the GDRC and the business owners out there first before they do it. So personal comments on this. I talk a lot about building places for people and not for cars, and you'll, you know that I'm a, a big proponent of multimodal transportation and putting in sidewalks. When you go to the intersection of Northwest Boulevard and Hillendale, it's very clear that this is a place for cars and not for people. It is an in and on, off and on ramp for Interstate eighty, and literally thousands of semi trucks pass through this intersection every day. It would not be wise for us to encourage pedestrians to cross Northwest Boulevard at that intersection. So after a conversation with staff, my, my recommendation is going to be that we waive the sidewalk for Speedway, but we require them to prepare the land for the sidewalk. So there's some, some things that they need to do so that when the sidewalk is ordered in, that their land is prepared, and it's not an additional cost at that time. And then beginning in the new year, we can start to engage the GDRC and the businesses in the industrial park on what our options are for pedestrian infrastructure within the park. Public Works Director, Ms. Gleason, had some really good ideas that I think we can take to the business owners and start the conversation. The infrastructure is clearly not needed yet. There are no desired paths. There are no pedestrians in the industrial park for the most part. But that doesn't mean it won't be in the future, and I think it's better to do this in a thoughtful, methodical way with input from our partners. So I'll let anyone else make comments and provide context, and then I'll make that motion after.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderwoman Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to reinforce what Alderman Gripp said, based on all our discussions that we've had over the last couple of days, and my little trip out to that area. I think it's really important to look at this question. It's really on Hillendale and Northwest Boulevard. Not inside the industrial park, but like he said, that this we make today may affect the businesses within the industrial park. There is only one sidewalk out there now, and it goes along Hillendale along a hotel. It has an ADA ramp that goes onto Northwest Boulevard, but I wouldn't want to step off Northwest, that sidewalk to try to cross Northwest Boulevard. The only use that I could see for pedestrian might be people from the hotel going over to buy something at to buy something at one of the gas stations that are across Northwest Boulevard. The rest of it is highly industrial, so I really do not see reinforcing Alderman Gripp. I don't see any need for a sidewalk there at this time. If you go west on Hillendale, east on Hillendale, there's really nothing there to walk to. So I don't think it's important. Plus, you have Love, a competitor across the street, that does not have a sidewalk. So, and at this point, it's not being requested or ordered to have one. So my first part is, I do not believe we need a sidewalk at this time for this business, and I don't see it being the beginning of this great pedestrian opportunity out there. It's an industrial area. My second part of this is I believe that, and I would like to request the city to look at what some criteria might be within areas zoned industrial, or at what points would sidewalks be needed and desired within industrial development areas. But for the purpose of this decision tonight, I believe that the request should be waived, that there is no need for a sidewalk in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, older woman Lee. Alderman Condon?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a question for staff. My question is, is there a limit to how many sidewalks we can call in per year? And my reason for asking is just that does giving them a waiver and then perhaps deciding as early as next year that we'd like to call these in, does that bump anything else to the front or back of a line that we also wanted to call in elsewhere in the city?
No, so for these particular sidewalk waivers, it's 100... The cost is 100% borne by the property owner. This is not part of the city 50-50 program, so we would have no fiscal constraint in what quantity we would order in.
Thank you. And I also have a comment. The gentleman that came to speak for the Speedway, I believe it was, he mentioned that other cities have offsets essentially where they can pay a certain amount of money in so that we can spend that money elsewhere in the city where the need for sidewalks is more prevalent. That's an interesting idea. We do something similar with stormwater retention as if it's just not practical at the site in a certain geographical area, you can pay for a waiver and then invest... The city would then invest that money elsewhere in water conservation practices. The only thing that I thought of just now is if we gave them that offset, would that forever waive their responsibility for a sidewalk as opposed to being able to call it in a short time? So this really flies in the face of a principle that the council has tried to set down because there is sort of that question of, you know, will we ever get there if we don't lay down that principle and just call them in as we see them? And this one's a tricky one because it really is out there in an area that's hard to imagine pedestrian traffic. But those are my comments, I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think this is very fair. You know, we want to be pro-business. You know, when you order business to put in a $50,000 sidewalk and you're the only one out there, that's just... That's bad government, bad business, you know, down the road. I'm sure Public Works Director Gleason has some wonderful ideas, but for now, let's support our businesses, help them get through this financial crisis that we're dealing with.
Thank you, Alderman Ambrose. Alderman Gripp?
All right, thank you. And I did forget one thing. I did want to recognize the staff for recommending denial on this because the direction from the council very clearly has been, we order in sidewalks. And we need to make those decisions if it goes against that direction. So thank you for making that recommendation and bringing it to us. And with that, I am going to make a motion to amend this, to grant the sidewalk portion of the waiver, but request sidewalk grade be established by the property owner.
There's a motion. There's a motion?
Second.
And a second, okay? Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing done? Okay, Brian, we'll call a roll to just because we're rolling tonight. So roll on the amendment that Alderman Gripp presented. Gripp?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ambrose? Peacock?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Ann Doorman?
Yes.
Nine yeses and one no, Your Honor. Thank you, Brian. So now we're back on the original motion. Is there any other discussion? Hearing seen none. Brian, please call the roll for the original motion with the amendment. Doorman?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ambrose? Lee?
Yes.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Dickman?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Ann Gripp?
Yes.
Ten yeses, Your Honor. Thank you, that motion passes. So now we're on the consent agenda.
It's a consent agenda.
There's a motion for approval, there's a motion, and a second for approval. Please roll call Brian on the consent agenda. Dickman?
Yes.
Ambrose? Gripp?
Yes.
Condon?
Yes.
Doorman?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes, except abstain on item 14, conflict of interest.
Jobchin?
Yes.
Peacock?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
And Dunn?
Yes.
Ten yeses with Lee abstaining from number 14. Thank you, Brian. Okay, we're good with consent then. Next item, is there any other ordinance motions or resolutions for tonight? There are none. Is there any... And the next item then is, is there any public with business? I'm pausing. Hearing and seeing none. Is there any other reports, Ms. Merritt, from your staff? Very good. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor to adjourn, please say aye.
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 Very good. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, season greetings, happy holidays, be safe. Thank you, everyone.